Hello, I'm Mary Catherine Sevier and along with Leslie Cullen, I am co-president of the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. On behalf of the League, I am pleased to welcome you to this candidate forum sponsored by the League in partnership with the city of Murfreesboro. We appreciate the support from Murfreesboro City Government provided by Alan Boesman, Director of Communications for the city of Murfreesboro and his staff. This forum can be viewed on Murfreesboro City TV located on Comcast Xfinity Channel 3 and 1094, Roku, Apple TV, Fire TV, YouTube, and Facebook, as well as on the city of Murfreesboro's website. We hope the broadcasting and streaming of the forum by the city on so many different platforms will reach the largest possible number of interested voters. The League seeks to conduct our forums in a nonpartisan manner. Key participants, especially the moderator, are never publicly aligned with any particular candidate or political party. The League believes that televised and streamed candidate forums provide an excellent opportunity for voters to become more familiar with the candidates and their positions. If you agree with us, please express your opinion about the value of televised and streamed candidate forums to the individuals seeking your vote. In the upcoming August 4th election, citizens of Murfreesboro will be voting to elect a mayor, city council, and city school board members. Early voting starts July 15th and runs through July 30th. If you're interested in obtaining an absentee ballot for the August 4th election, please go to the Rutherford County Election Commission website. You can find that at election.rutherfordcountytn.gov to learn about that process. We thank you for your attention as you hear these candidates introduce themselves and answer questions about pertinent issues facing the city of Murfreesboro. We hope you will find this forum useful in deciding which candidates you choose to support. Your vote gives you a prime opportunity to influence how government is conducted in the city of Murfreesboro. Thank you for joining us and remember, your vote counts.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jolene Rednotty and I will serve as moderator for this evening's candidate forum. This forum is cosponsored by the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County and the city of Murfreesboro. The League believes that candidate forum provides an excellent way for our voters to become more familiar with candidates and their positions. It is my pleasure to welcome both our candidates here at the Murfreesboro City Council chambers and our viewers at home to this program. This evening, you will be hearing remarks from the candidates for Murfreesboro City Council. There are three seats available for the council. Before introducing the candidates, I would like to outline the procedure for this evening. Each candidate will be asked to make an opening statement in a two-minute period. When all candidates have completed the opening statement, then several additional questions will be asked. The candidates will respond to those questions with a one-minute answer. The candidates will be allowed two minutes to answer the last question and make any closing remarks. I want to thank the candidates here tonight for their gracious acceptance to our invitation to participate in this event. The candidate Samantha Sorino had agreed to attend this evening but had to cancel due to illness, so we wish her well. Speaking first is Ms. Averwater. You may make your opening statement. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Jolene. Hello, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for having the candidates here tonight to discuss our platforms. I'd like to start by saying I'm honored to be on the ballot with these people sitting here. I think it's a great diverse group and looking at the future leaders of Murfreesboro, I'm very excited. My name is Jamie Averwater. I'm a local business owner and attorney here in Murfreesboro. I was born and raised in Rutherford County, of course moved to the city limits for college. I attended MTSU where I studied economics and went on to law school at Belmont Law in Nashville. After law school, I chose to stay in Murfreesboro to start my business here, to grow my family here. My husband and I live on the southwest side of town, which as you know is very, very busy these days. We're seeing a lot of growth, a lot of people move here, and I'm very excited about that. I think that Murfreesboro is without a doubt the best place to live. Otherwise, a lot of us wouldn't live there, right? And so therefore, we need good leadership in city council so that we can continue to prosper and grow and lead the way that we have the last 10 years. My experience as a board member of local nonprofits, as a leader in my company, as an adjudicator of the law, gives me a wide range of skills and sometimes good arguments to serve on city council. I currently serve on the city's planning commission for the city of Murfreesboro, so if you've attended one of those meetings, which are always fascinating, you've likely seen me bring up some interesting points about parking and infrastructure. So I look forward to bringing all that I've learned on the Murfreesboro Planning Commission to city council if the voters choose to elect me and I look forward to tonight. Thank you, guys.
Ms. Carolyn Cox.
Good evening. And again, thank you, League of Women Voters, for giving us this opportunity and this platform to present our information to the public. My name is Carolyn Cox and I am running for city council. I am not a native Murfreesburian. I've been in the Rutherford County area for about the last 17 years. I am a graduate of Tennessee State University with a bachelor's degree in communications. I also hold an MBA from Middle Tennessee State University. I am in the transportation industry and I've been working with that for well over 25 years. I'm a servant leader at heart. I have been doing this thing called community service and giving back to others for well over 30 years and I absolutely love it. I am a former election commissioner, bringing fair and balanced elections to Rutherford County. I am currently the president of the Rutherford County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. I am actually a newly appointed board member for United Way for Rutherford and Cannon Counties and I am just excited to be here and looking forward to letting you know who I am and how I can best serve the citizens of Rutherford County.
Thank you. Ms. Scales-Harris.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Madeline Scales-Harris and I'm running for reelection to the Murfreesboro City Council. I'm homegrown. I was born and raised here in Murfreesboro and the reason why I'm running this time is this is where God has put me. He put me in this position and He wants me to be a voice for His people. I believe firmly that we serve God by serving our fellow man and I am so, so grateful for this opportunity to be able to serve you again. I am, when you look at me, you're looking at a miracle if you've never seen a miracle. A couple of months ago, about 10 months ago, I came down with paraneoplastic syndrome and 1 in 10,000 people get this disease and I went through the treatment where they took all my blood out and as they were putting my blood back in, I could see angels dispensing all around me and that was you, the citizens of Murfreesboro praying for me. And I am proud to announce that I am totally healed and so I am so grateful to God that He has put me in this position. I'm running also because I love people. Loving people is part of my DNA and I make people and their wants and needs a priority in my life. I am not at all intimidated. You can't intimidate me because I've been through too much. I've been through segregation, integration, and you name it, but I have come out on top with God. And for the people of Murfreesboro, I just want to say that how much I love you. My parents, Robert T. Ninety and Mary Scales, I am running this race in memory of them. My father ran in 1964 and he won, was the first African-American to win since Reconstruction and my mom served also, so I look forward to serving you and I'm very excited to be a citizen of Murfreesboro.
Thank you. Mr. Maxwell.
Well, good evening. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum and I'd also like to thank the audience members and the city council candidates for participating in this forum tonight and best of luck to each and every one of you while staying safe over the next several months up to August 4th. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Austin Maxwell. I'm a native of Knoxville, Tennessee and that's where I spent the first 22 years of my life, where I was fortunate to meet a young lady by the name of Claire Daniel who grew up here in this great city as the daughter of Scott and Kathy Daniel. We were married in 1990 at First Baptist Church just down the street and traveled due to work obligations to Huntsville, Alabama and Columbia, South Carolina, returning in 1998 with four boys, Matthew, Mitchell, Manning, and Michael. And we returned because we believed at that time and still believe to this day that this is absolutely the best place to live, work, and raise a family. And that's one of the reasons why I'm seeking this office is to help maintain what we call the best city in Middle Tennessee to live and work. I've served in our community by coaching youth football and being the president of the Riverdale Football Boosters. I've also served our nation for 28 years in the Tennessee Army National Guard with deployments to Afghanistan and Iraq. In the simplest of terms, I've served my country and it's now time to serve my community. I'm going to focus on helping us just achieve the best and smartest balanced growth, which will obviously benefit all the citizens of Murfreesboro. From a leadership standpoint, I lead by listening. I have two ears and one mouth and I intend to use it in that order. So if you have something on your mind, do not hesitate to contact me at my personal cellphone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russell.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. Thank you to the city of Murfreesboro. I enjoy serving you and I want to tell you that I am your candidate for city council. I grew up in West Tennessee. I grew up in a small town, one stoplight. Even though we had one stoplight, we had values and in those values, we had principles. I learned those principles from my hero. My hero was my grandfather, Ralph Tate. He taught me that you have to work hard to get what you want in life. I learned those principles from my mom. She was a single mom. She taught me the value of an education. That's why I went to Tennessee State University, majored in mechanical engineering, and then left there and reached the highest echelons of corporate. I've been in a boardroom, but I've also been in the fields plowing them, so I understand what it means to move up in life. I will tell you, my wife and I moved to Murfreesboro over 16 years ago. We moved here because of its affordability, but we stay here because of you, because of the people of Murfreesboro. We have three kids and six grandkids. We've been married over 28 years. I've been serving since I got here. It started with my church. I started serving in various leadership positions and now I serve you on the planning commission. On the planning commission, we see the growth of the city, we see the issues, but I also serve you on the Rutherford County IDB Board, which is where we try to bring great jobs, high-paying jobs to the city. With those views and with my experience, I want to be the servant of we. I've been given a lot in my life, but I want to give back. This city has given a lot to me and I want to serve it back. That's what I'm here, that's why I want your vote, and that's why I'm serving.
Thank you. Mr. Turner.
Again, too, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to introduce myself and my platform on why I should be elected a city council of Murfreesboro. As a native of Murfreesboro, I have seen this city grow by leaps and bounds, not only in my personal life, growing up with a single-parent household, living in apartments, but over the years, we strive for to make it life better. We moved up from the apartments to a house. My mother got a better-paying job at Nissan and we were able to afford better clothes and better cars. And those values that she taught and I remember the neighborhoods in Murfreesboro growing up where we was more of a close-knit community where everybody pretty much knew everybody because we only had two high schools growing up. It seems like now Murfreesboro is growing at a pace that is really unbelievable for somebody who has been here all their life, for new people coming in town who was once born here in Murfreesboro. Where all this growth has come from, who are these people? I truly believe there must be a balance in growth. There's some good in growth, but there's also some negative in growth and we're seeing that negative with the traffic, the cost of living, the cost of housing. I've served on the Murfreesboro Parks Rec Commission for the last 12 years, very active in the community, from feeding to school supplies to racial disparity to, you know, I just love Murfreesboro. Like I said, my family, my mother's family, the Carnys, they go back about five generations from Rutherford County. My dad's family, the Crawfords, they go back about five generations and I hope and pray that my kids will stay in Murfreesboro and Rutherford County for a sixth generation.
Thank you. Candidates, I'm going to ask you your first question. You have one minute to answer and so just we're going to start off with Ms. Cox. And my first question is, why are you running for Murfreesboro City Council?
That is a great question. Again, as I stated earlier, I have always served my community from as early as I can remember, but when you talk about actively being involved, I've been actively involved in the community for well over 30 years. There have been a number of United Way agencies that I partner with within the workforce, worked with the NAACP. I helped to develop a nonprofit that centers on mental health. Service is simply what I have always done and for me, the natural progression was to run for city council where I can be of even greater benefit to the community.
Thank you. Ms. Scales-Harris, why are you running for Murfreesboro City Council?
I am running to be a voice for the people who cannot be a voice for themselves. I am running to bring diversity to the city council and I'm running because I look at our city and I see a city with a lot of strengths and a lot of weaknesses, but as a city, we seem to lack communication among ourselves. So I'm running to also try to bring our community together.
Thank you. Mr. Maxwell.
I'm running because of my desire to help lead this city so that it stays the best place in Middle Tennessee to live and raise a family. I'm a leader and I've been leading people and addressing complex issues since I was a 22-year-old second lieutenant in 1988. I've been promoted multiple times at multiple companies because past success predicts future success. In short, now that I'm retired from the military as well as being an empty nester at home, I have the ability and the bandwidth to be that servant leader for the city of Murfreesboro and the citizens in Murfreesboro in order to help our city to continue to grow and prosper. As I said earlier, I lead by listening. I don't have all the answers, but I do have the willingness and the aptitude to basically say, "Give me as much input as possible so that I can be your voice on city council."
Thank you. Mr. Russell, why are you running for city council?
Well, I will tell you, I'm running because I believe in serving. I believe that our citizens' dreams to serve in this community. I will tell you, in serving on the planning commission, I see the issues that our city has and what I've learned is that my background in engineering, my background in running large businesses will bode well with the city. I would, as an engineer, I'm built to solve problems. Our problems today are not simple problems. When you talk about the landfill, it's not a simple problem. When you talk about wastewater treatment, it's not a simple problem. If it was, the city council would have already solved it. I think we need a diversity of thought on the city council. I think we need a diversity of education on the city council. That's why I think with my background in engineering and operations management and supply chain, it will bode well on the city council.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, why do you want to run and be on the city council?
I ran before in 2010 for city council. Came up a little short and I said if I ever run again, when I reach 55, which was this year, pretty much an empty nester. All my kids, my oldest daughter graduated from MTSU, she's out working. My youngest daughter just graduated from Oakland, who will be attending MTSU in the fall. So now is my time, my turn in my town to run for city council. Again, I love Murfreesboro. This is the only place I know. The only time I left Murfreesboro is when I went to the United States Navy and I thought that, you know, when I did leave, I said, "I can't wait to leave Murfreesboro," but when I did leave, I couldn't wait to get back. And as I tell people all the time, I'm just like Joseph, "Don't leave my bones nowhere except back here in Murfreesboro."
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Averwater.
As a small business owner, I know firsthand how difficult it can be to balance a budget, to control revenue, and have responsible expenditures. I know how difficult it is to make decisions that benefit everyone and not just myself and that benefit the company and my employees and I believe that Murfreesboro needs those types of leaders, not people that are only benefiting themselves or a certain side of town or a certain group of people, but the city as a whole. As a planning commissioner for the city of Murfreesboro, I stepped into that role almost a year ago and had no idea that a year from then, I'd be running for city council. I thought planning commission was going to teach me all I wanted to know, but it turns out, there's a lot more I could learn and I'm enjoying doing it on Murfreesboro Planning Commission and I look forward to learning more hopefully on city council and hearing about the concerns of people across the city.
Thank you. Question number two, you have one minute to answer. What do you see as the role of city government in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse population of the city of Murfreesboro? Ms. Scales-Harris.
Okay. To demonstrate that there are opportunities in our city for everyone, we don't just need to talk the talk because, you know, talking is easy and it sounds good, the words sound good, but we need to walk the walk. And one example of that is minority businesses. Now, we get these big contracts, but how many minority businesses in our city actually gets any part of the contract? I would like to see us, as we put the bids out, to require that at least 10% to 15% of the bids that go out for these jobs are handled by minority businesses because if we don't do that, it won't be a chance for minorities to use their businesses in our city and we have a lot of good minority businesses. And when I talk about minorities, I am talking about Mexicans, Asians, female businesses because if we call ourselves...
Thank you. Mr. Maxwell, what do you see as the role of city government in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse population of the city of Murfreesboro?
The role of city government is to create, you know, a safe and secure environment for all of the citizens in our city, to where all of our citizens can live their lives and raise their families and attend to their business. The city should ensure this regardless of a person's race, their creed, their color, or their sexual orientation. I would say that, you know, through my experiences in business and the military, the best outcomes and decisions always are arrived at through a diversity of skills and opinions by taking input from all. And so I would just encourage that our city government and leaders be open to a diversity of ideas and opinions so we can make the best decisions for everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Russell.
Well, thank you. This is a great question. I will tell you, in my experience in running supply chains and running operations, I've found that the best solutions come from a diverse staff, come from a diverse employee base. What we've found is, is we've found that by having a diverse opinion, a diverse employee base, and utilizing all of those people's ideas, we found that we came up with better solutions for our people. In my companies, we hired a diverse staff. That's what I would promote with the city. Why? Because it allows us to connect with the people better. If you have somebody on your staff, then you can have somebody that you can directly communicate with. That's why I think we should reflect our city. Our city is more diverse year by year. We should make sure that that diversity of opinion, diversity of thought is with our city.
Thank you. Mr. Turner.
You know, as I talked about, growing up here in Murfreesboro, we had a choice of high schools, either you went to Oakland, Riverdale, but now I notice in Murfreesboro, the diversity of the people who are in Murfreesboro now. I did some seasonal work for Amazon here maybe during Christmas and it just amazed me how many different diversity groups is in Murfreesboro. I'm like, where do they stay at? What are their involvement? What do they do here? My thing is make everyone feel welcome here and if they want to be involved with government, if they want to be, you know, if they want to be a part of the community or maybe they just want to just live a peaceful life and not be a part of government, but, you know, but my thing is just treat everybody respectful, make them feel welcome, and do what you can and support them when they need the city assistance.
Thank you. Ms. Averwater.
I am so fortunate that in my job and my career, I get to meet people every day moving to Murfreesboro and it is amazing the diversity that is coming here. When I was growing up here, I would say very few people in my class spoke other languages. My niece is in elementary school here at a Murfreesboro City School and she tells me that she has people that speak all these funny languages, is what a first grader calls them. So we get to have a long talk about the different languages that can be in one school. I think the city government's role is to promote and encourage that diversity, particularly in the city schools, by having other teachers that speak other languages and promoting that growth of students. I think it's going to make our next generation so much more welcoming and strong to a diverse community.
Thank you. Ms. Cox.
You know, when I got this question, I was like, there's so much that I could say. One of the things about diversity that I've had to learn is that you have to go out and actually seek it. It does not necessarily always come to you. So even in my circle of friends and organizations, I had to expand that circle so that I could better understand because I think we should first seek to understand and then to be understood. I was intentional in making sure that I was in a diverse group of organizations and what I found was what I really already knew. We are so much more alike than we are different. We all have some of the so many commonalities... We all have some of the, so many commonalities, and if we truly take the time to work together to get to understand each other, I think that not only the community, but city government would be better all, better off overall.
Thank you. Question number three, again, one minute to answer. What do you think about giving tax abatements to small businesses? We will start with Mr. Maxwell.
You know, I'm not sure if giving a tax abatement to a small business makes sense. And I'll frame that in the senses that you have to give tax abatements when you've got businesses that are wanting to come to Murfreesboro. A good example, that would probably be Costco, which I believe the city gave a million dollars in tax abatements as part of that deal. The city recovered that in about 18 months in terms of the sales tax revenue that they recovered. So that's one example. Now, if a small business were to come and say, you know, we're looking at expanding, we're looking at going from a thousand foot, square foot facility and 25 employees to 3,075 employees, I think it's something you should take a look at, if it makes sense, because it's a business that's here, that's invested, it's been, you know, spending money in our community, that's trying to grow, so we should be entertaining that if it makes sense for the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Russell, what do you think about giving tax abatements to small businesses?
Well, I tell you, I currently serve on the Rutherford County IDB Board. On that ID Board, that's exactly what we do. We put together programs that allow our, allow us to be competitive with other communities. That's why we give the tax abatements. The jobs that come in, we don't give it to them just to give it to them. They have to bring more to the table than what we give them. And that's why you're seeing it recover in 18 months for Costco. What I will tell you is, with small businesses though, it depends. It really depends, because most small businesses don't own the real estate that they're in, and they're not growing at a, at a rate that would, it would make sense to give a tax abatement. But what they do need is help with their business plans, help with their growth. That's where a business incubator for the city of Murfreesboro and the county partnering together would help the small businesses. But we need to listen to them. They can tell us what, what they need.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
And when you talk about tax abatement for small businesses, I agree when, I guess it depends on the size of a business. You know, I, I own a present small business, I'm a one-man operation, so do I need a tax abatement? No. But, but you know, but if you think of the city of Murfreesboro, Murfreesboro was basically founded upon small business. So we, we don't want to forget the small businesses, because they are what made Murfreesboro Murfreesboro. Before Nissan came, before Costco came, before Walmart came, before Amazon came, it was always the small businesses that kept Murfreesboro up and running. So they too, you know, if we gonna be equal and fair with it, if the same break that large businesses need, the small businessmen need that same opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Everwater?
It's like y'all knew I wanted to talk economics. I love that. I will have a differ, different opinion here. I don't believe tax abatements are appropriate for small businesses or large corporations. I think businesses want to come to Murfreesboro for a variety of reasons. Safety, and our school system, and our community, and our convenience to the interstate and to Nashville, and to a close, massive airport. I don't believe that the city has to entice or give tax abatements to companies, big or small, to want to lay shop here. As a business owner, this is a wonderful place to have a business, and I was able to do it without a tax abatement, and I'm very grateful for that. So I don't support tax abatements for small businesses or large businesses.
Thank you. Ms. Cox?
While the city of Murfreesboro is definitely growing, we've got all these wonderful things that are actually coming to us, I think that it is really important that we make sure that we give our small businesses a chance, that they actually have the opportunity to thrive and to grow as the city grows. Giving them a tax abatement would actually be a good thing for them, because it gives them more of a solid footing. It gives them an opportunity to truly expand and grow their business and to become an even greater economic standpoint in regards to the city. So when it comes to tax abatements, if it actually helps that small business grow, thrive as the city grows and thrives, I think it's a good thing.
Okay, Ms. Harris?
That's an interesting question. It's a sticky question. We could try to give them some kind of, maybe incentive, maybe other than taxes, but we can give them an incentive. But the thing is, with small businesses, I talked to two bankers about this question, and they said that about 80% of the people that are applying for loans in the small business are being denied. The stats show that they have a lack sometimes of experience, a lack of capital, and how would this affect the overall taxpayers? Even like with Costco's, everything is driven by the money you bring in, what you make. Now Costco's is a big place, yes, but hey, people are gonna have to shop there, and the way the economy is going, they could even fail. So, but I believe that everyone deserves a chance, but we need to look at the entire picture.
Thank you. Question number four, again, one minute. What are your visions for the city of Murfreesboro for the next four years? And we will start with Mr. Russell.
Thank you. So my vision for Murfreesboro is simple. I want to leave Murfreesboro better than what, what it was when I came. My vision for Murfreesboro is that we solve our growth issues. It isn't rocket science how to do it, but it is complex. We can solve our growth issues because we are Murfreesboro. We can solve our infrastructure issues because we are Murfreesboro. We can solve our housing issues by paying attention to the details, because we are Murfreesboro. And because we are Murfreesboro, our people are our biggest asset. Our people in Murfreesboro have, have come across and solved many, many challenges. And I believe that's how we do it. We sat down, we listened, we understand each other, we turned the tide, we actually invest in our infrastructure, we invest in understanding what it takes to get back to affordable housing.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, what are your visions for the city of Murfreesboro for the next four years?
I would say would be controlled growth, limit numbers of apartment complexes, affordable living, first-time buyers, first-time homeowners, not only for them, but also our seniors. You know, there's no affordable living for our seniors. Focus more on improving Murfreesboro within. It seems like we're more focused on the outsiders, people from out of town, out of state, coming into Murfreesboro, making it their place of residency, instead of focusing on the people who already live here and have been here for years to make their life better, so they can hopefully retire here and find better jobs here. See, Murfreesboro is pretty much a blue collar town, but the way the prices are now for housing, apartments, the cost of living makes Murfreesboro a white collar town, but the jobs are just not here for us to support that type lifestyle.
Thank you. What are your visions for the city of Murfreesboro for the next four years, Ms. Everwater?
Thank you, Jolene. I would love a curbside recycling program, and I know that's very specific for such a broad question. Obviously, I have a lot of visions for the next four years in Murfreesboro. But if you look at the surrounding cities, towns in Tennessee, almost every one of them has a curbside recycling program. And while it does take money to run such a program, and lots of people have brought that up to me over the last few weeks, I think we should also acknowledge that having a curbside recycling program will reduce the amount of solid waste that we deposit into the landfill. And we all know, most of us know, that the landfill is a very hot topic right now, and we need to face the issues. So my number one priority for the first, for the next four years, hopefully the first four years, would be establishing a curbside recycling program.
Thank you. Ms. Cox?
My vision for the next four years would be to finish up some of these projects we currently got going on. That would be a good thing. And to really work to bring community together. Not only do we have a landfill problem, we've got a homelessness problem, which is far greater than any city government could actually handle. I want to see us to be able to bring community together, to solve some of the underlying opportunities that occur where you have increased growth. I think that there are lots of great organizations that are here that can actually help us accomplish those tasks.
Thank you. Ms. Gales Harris, what are your visions for the city of Murfreesboro the next four years?
Well, I envision looking at the planning and the zoning in a way that would be beneficial to our entire community. And one big thing is strategizing. We need to strategize, and we need to strategize where we can compete. And we are seeing a change that way. For an example, I have noticed that the Dollar General stores are popping up all over Murfreesboro, and they are popping up really close to residential areas. So if I need, they have now frozen things, refrigerated things, and if I need bacon, eggs, and milk, instead of going two or three miles to Walmart or the Kroger, if I have a Dollar General store right in that vicinity, that's where I'm gonna go for the competition. And I think we need to look at that. I think it's very important to look at our competition, and that's an example. And forget the name brand.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, or Mr. Maxwell, sorry. Mr. Maxwell.
You know, my vision is that Murfreesboro continues to be a great place to work, to live, and to raise a family. In order to do this though, you have to tackle issues around smart and balanced growth with regards to our housing options. We would have to be working as a council with our state legislative delegation to make sure that we address the discharge rate that TDEC has imposed, because that ultimately is gonna affect us in terms of sewage capacity and sanitation. We have to close the gap and pay in benefits for our first responders. I would love to see a waiting list for police and fire four years from now, because we have the best benefits for our first responders in all of Middle Tennessee. We've got to find sustainable solutions for our trash and waste, whether it involves Wasteway or some sort of recycling program. And lastly, I'd like to see more corporate entities come to here to where we're not driving to Nashville or Williamson County, we stay right here to work.
Very good. Thank you. We have one more question, and as a reminder, this question is also your closing, so you have two minutes to answer this question. And we will start off with Mr. Turner. And the question is, what three local issues do you think are the most important in Murfreesboro at this time? And if elected, how would you address those issues?
I would say probably the biggest three concerns facing Murfreesboro right now is infrastructure, traffic, you know, it seemed like, you know, it used to be a time when you could zip around Murfreesboro in like 15 minutes. Now it takes you 15 minutes just to get down Broad Street. Affordable living. My daughter just graduated from MTSU and she started a job. So for her to move out, it's gonna cost her somewhere between $1,600 and $2,000 for an apartment, or for a new home construction in Murfreesboro, $300,000. And when my, when my, when myself and my wife first got married in 98, we had a starter home, a three-bedroom, two-bath, cost about $150,000. That was about 22 years ago. That same house costs over $300,000 now. The income that she's making, there's no way she can afford a $300,000 house, so that means she'll probably have to stay at home a little longer. But, but you know, affordable living, not only for our young people, especially those, you know, MTSU used to, people who went to MTSU, they kind of stayed in Murfreesboro because they liked the, the school, they liked Murfreesboro. But I think we're gonna lose a lot of MTSU students, because first of all, the jobs are not here to sustain a living for them to live here in Murfreesboro. And also our seniors, you know, our seniors who, who lived here pretty much all their life, worked here all their life, they need some type of a lifestyle where they can retire comfortably. And, you know, more affordable senior living housing, you know. We know we have Westbrook Towers, there's a lot of places that, you know, seniors just don't have, they can't afford to live. So if that's the case, our homeless problem will be greater in the next few years if we don't address this.
Thank you. Ms. Everwater, what three local issues do you think are the most important in Murfreesboro at this time? And if elected, how would you address those issues?
Maybe my favorite question of the evening. My three biggest issues that I believe are facing Murfreesboro right now are safety, responsible spending, and smart development. I think that Murfreesboro is growing. I don't think that, I know that. And with growth comes more people, and with more people comes more crime and more traffic. And I think that by offering competitive salaries to our first responders and our police officers who protect us every day, will help keep Murfreesboro a safe place to live. Number two, responsible spending. And some people have said, well, how are you gonna give people raises and also keep taxes low? Well, I think the answer is, we have to spend wisely so that we can keep the taxes low while also offering those competitive salaries and increasing our amenities that those of us who live here love to utilize, like the park system and hopefully a recycling program. My third issue facing Murfreesboro that I would love to address is development. I recently voted against an apartment complex coming to Medical Center Parkway, and people asked, well, are you anti-apartments? Are you anti-development? Of course not. I am for smart development. I did not believe that Medical Center Parkway was the right place for an additional 300 apartments. And the truth is, the key to affordable housing is supply and demand. So we can't be anti-development and anti-apartment and still want affordable housing. So I believe that we should welcome smart development and housing so that the cost of living can be more affordable for the people who currently live here and who hopefully come here in the future. Supply and demand coupled with a good mixture of housing is the answer to a lot of our affordable housing issues, and I look forward to serving, hopefully, on the city council to address those issues.
Thank you. Ms. Cox, what three local issues do you think are the most important in Murfreesboro at this time? And if elected, how would you address those issues?
The three issues that I think are, that are most important are growth in infrastructure, continuous economic improvement, and public safety. Murfreesboro is an absolutely wonderful city. We have branded it so well, and I love being here. That's why I have stayed. And as the city grows, we have to address the infrastructure opportunities that we have. Currently, the city council is really doing a nice job with what they have going on and the various projects that are, that are, that are happening. With one that is, that I can think of in particular is the Brinkley Road expansion, which gives those young kids a safer opportunity to actually walk to school. So lots of infrastructure opportunities there and ways that we can actually improve upon being able to get around our city a whole lot sooner. I think that continuous economic improvement is important. Because Murfreesboro is an attractive city, I too believe that we can get those white-collar jobs here so that we're not having to drive to the Nashville and Brentwoods, that, that we can actually stay here and actually do that. One great example of that is the Kasai Company. They were in Manchester. Those individuals that were driving there now actually get an opportunity to stay here, and those are actually good-paying jobs. I think public safety is also important. Not only do we need to make sure that our fire and rescue are paid a competitive wage, but we need to make sure that the leadership is actually there, because just paying them a good wage is not going to keep them here. People stay in the city because they know that you care about them. And I think that that is what we need to do, and as your city councilman, those are the things that I would do in order to further the city.
Thank you. Ms. Gales Harris, what three local issues do you think are the most important in Murfreesboro at this time? at this time? And if reelected, how would you address those issues?
And we're also doing our closing remark, right?
Yes.
I think the three local issues, one of them is crime. I think we need to get a grip on crime. We have people coming from all around us into our city, and a lot of crime is caused by the people that are moving in here. So I think we need to have a lot of programs for the police officers and everybody on understanding the different aspects of crime. I think another thing is the traffic. You used to go in your car and go across town in 10 minutes. Now it takes you 10 minutes just to get out of your subdivision. So I think we need to do something with crime and educate people that we are working, but a lot of the roads that people are complaining about, they're state-owned roads. But we are doing a good job with TDEC. And another thing is mental health. That is a big thing, that is a big thing that is swept under the rug or is quiet, but we have so many children, so many children that are suffering from mental health. I'd like to see us improve that. And at this time, I want to thank the citizens of Murfreesboro for your support of me over the last few years. This is my last time running. I will not be seeking reelection anymore. I am running in memory of my parents, Robert and T-90 Gales, who I sit on their shoulders, not stand because you wobble, but I sit on their shoulders. I'm sitting in the same position that my mama sat in. I'm opening the door in the same handle that she opened the door, and I thank you, Murfreesboro. And if you do not reelect me, I'm good. I'm good, seriously, because I've done the best I can do. And when you've done the best you can do, that's all you can do. But if you want me to run again and help you again, I will do that. I love you, Murfreesboro, and I just want to thank you in advance. If I don't make it, I'm good. Meaning that I thank you. I mean, I want to win, but, but, but thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maxwell, what three local issues do you think are the most important in Murfreesboro at this time? And if elected, how would you address those issues?
Well, the first would be smart and balanced growth. You know, in the simplest of terms, if you adjust your 3.6 units per acre for single-family home to, say, 4.0, or you adjust your townhomes from seven per acre to 8.0, in a 100-acre development, that extra housing, that through density, you're able now to offer more affordable housing for the citizens through supply. And you could also perhaps carve some of that back for police, fire, teachers, and others that we want to keep in this city to serve in this city. So that's one thing. Sewage capacity, I mentioned it earlier, you've got to work with your legislative delegation to help solve that with TDEC because otherwise, we're gonna face some very expensive alternatives down the road. And thirdly, really crime, but also first responder pay-in benefits. You know, our police, they're our heroes. You know, everybody likes to thank veterans like me and say, thank you for your service, but the police are serving each and every day, and they're 39 police officers short right now. If you went over to the fire station on Jones Boulevard, there's a pile of firefighter equipment from other firefighters that have left this city for other departments at probably a cost of $150,000 per firefighter over 18 months. Pay them great wages and benefits, and let's attract and retain and keep our best talent here in this city. Those are kind of the top three, you know, issues. I would once again say thank you for this forum, it's been great, and I would humbly ask for your vote because I believe I'm the servant leader that this city needs. I've served my country, it's time to serve my city, and I will lead by listening to all of you. And if you don't believe me, call me at 615-969-8657. Don't call me after nine o'clock, I need my rest. But I humbly ask for your vote, and please get out and vote August 4th.
Thank you. Mr. Russell, what three local issues do you think are the most important in Murfreesboro at this time? And if elected, how would you address those issues?
For me, the top three issues are growth, infrastructure, and housing. And the reason why I know that is, is because when I'm going out to Kroger, or I'm going out to the market, or I'm going out on Saturday to the farmer's market, that's what the people tell me. They tell me it's hard getting across town. They tell me it's tough when you look at, I own my house, but my kids can't own their house, which means the American dream is not for them, and I refuse to believe it. I think we need to peel back the onion. I think on the, on the planning side, we need to peel back the onion. We need to understand what are we doing in our policies and procedures that are increasing the cost. Austin said density. Clearly, density is one of the things. But if we give you more density as a developer, we want something back. That's why when you look at the apartments on Medical Center, I asked the developer, I want something back. I know from serving on the IDB that we need Class A office space so we can attract those high-paying jobs. That's part of the growth plan, too. You have to have those high-paying jobs in order to afford the houses that are being built. But I also know, as a supply chain guy, we have to attack the cost side. The cost side is what I do, and that's what I've done in my past, and I think experience matters. That's why I serve you in the different capacities that I do today. I think servant leadership matters. That's what I do, and I think that I am the right candidate for the job. That's why I want your vote. That's why I want your vote, and that's why I want your vote. I want to serve "we," and "we" means you.
Thank you. Thank you. Once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters and the city of Murfreesboro, I want to thank all the candidates for your participation today. I also want to thank Director of Communications for the city of Murfreesboro, Mr. Alan Bozeman, and his staff for their help in representing, or, yeah, presenting, sorry, this program on Murfreesboro City TV tonight and making it available for later viewing. I want to encourage all of Murfreesboro citizens to vote. Vote, vote, vote. Early voting begins July 15th, and it goes through July 30th. You may early vote at any of the early voting locations. On Election Day, which is August 4th, you will be able to vote at one of the vote centers, any one of the vote centers in Rutherford County. To find out which location is best for you, visit the Rutherford County Elections Commission, or if you are interested in applying for an absentee ballot, please visit the Rutherford County Election Commission at election.rutherfordcountytn.gov. Also, don't forget to check out vote411.org. This is an online voter guide developed by the League of Women Voters for more information about the candidates that appeared at this forum and other candidates running for office in Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. Please vote in this election and help determine who will be on the Murfreesboro City Council. Your vote matters. May we close with a round of applause for all the candidates.